Check your mics.
Check.
All right. At six o'clock, I call this meeting to order. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance. My pledge of allegiance is the flag of the United States of America. It is the republic of which it stands, one nation, united in the Constitution of the British Empire. First up is approval of the agenda.
I will move forward with the approval of the agenda for May 13, 2025.
Move to second and any discussion. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Or say no. Next up is special presentation from the library.
Good evening. My name is Norm Kittleson and this is Ray Veeder. We are both board members representing the city of Whitehall on the White Lake Community Library Board. And we are here to give our annual presentation. Ray is giving you some information regarding the library, how we've been doing over the last year and how we strategically plan. And I'm going to go over some of the highlights and things that have been going on at the library over the last year. And we really appreciate the opportunity to serve on the board. It's a real pleasure for me personally and I really enjoy the opportunity. In terms of our financial health, once again, we got a clean audit this year and we have a healthy fund balance. And we try to take our fiduciary responsibility seriously. We've had some capital projects funding that have covered new meeting room furniture, which is a nice upgrade, and a new website that helps meet new accessibility guidelines. And we think that's working really well. We have a tower repair and new entrance canopy slated for later this summer. The original design of the building did not allow for very good drainage and we had some problems with the pillars on the sides of the building near the entrance. Those were getting some rot in them and we wanted to make sure that the building was structurally sound. The canopy that we're going to have installed is going to come out about eight, about eight feet over the entrance. And it'll also help with drainage that will help minimize any future problems with buildup in the columns and other parts of the building. Couple of highlights for this coming year. We've gotten some nice grants. One is for some solar panels and we're looking forward to getting those put in. General accessibility to the building and some new furnishings for the teen area. And we're celebrating 25 years this year. It's kind of hard to believe that the building's been around for 25 years when we think back when the library used to be down here. Much nicer facility and it's a, it's a real gift to the community. And we get so many positive comments from community members and visitors. We get a lot of people here in the summer who use the library regularly. And everybody seems to enjoy it and I think it's a real asset to the community. So I'd be happy to take any questions that you have.
Several of us here went to Mayor Exchange Day this last, last week. Tour of the Fremont Library, also a very, very nice place. One of the things that really impressed me was the child infant box. I think somebody has a folk tattoo. Let me sort of look into it. It's pretty cool. It actually allows the, the parent to bring the child with them. Set them, it's almost like a bassinet but a big one. Gives them some play area and mom can sit there or dad or whoever can sit there and play with them. And it was a cool idea and yeah, I like cool ideas. So everybody knows that. So yeah, that was, that was interesting. I, I like our location better. But yeah, those are both great libraries. I couldn't believe how many people went through that one as well. So.
Yeah, when you said infant box, I was thinking like, no, 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 I was thinking because we do have, and you can, we have the, I want to make sure I get it correct, the little packages of stuff for families. Yeah, right. Right, yeah, no, yeah. So that's what I thought you were going to get at first. But yeah, and I, no, that's not a bad idea. I mean, if we can, we can look into that, I think that'd be great. Yeah, that's cool. That's the thing. Put them outside when the weather's nice.
There you go.
Instead of dropping them off at the firehouse. You're going to make the box still, that's a little different. Any, any other questions?
Yes.
I have a couple of comments first. I too remember the old City Hall when I used to walk to it. Friends of the library, that kind of thing. And, but I've been really happy with the new library. I think it's a fantastic resource and the staffing has always been really great people in the board. But I'm really mostly impressed with the programming. I see their offerings on Facebook frequently and I'm like, man, this isn't our community yet. So it's very impressive. One of the things we saw in Fremont, remember, was a history section.
Oh, yes.
And we, we were very excited about that and wondered if you have room to expand.
We got an estimate for getting an addition, $8 billion.
Yeah, I think Jeff has it under the sofa. So he has some questions, don't you?
Bury the backyard.
But it, it was really, they have a larger library, so they had more room for things. But it was really impressive to see that because we have a lot of history documentation that, that probably should go somewhere. And you probably already have some ready, right, Virginia?
Oh, yeah, quite a bit, yes.
Okay, but that's something to, to put in your budget for next year?
Well, yeah, we, to, to go at what Tanya said, I mean, it, it was really, you walk into the room, it, that room is just all history. So we got talking about how much history we're actually losing in the community paper documents, et cetera, that aren't being taken care of as well as they probably should have.
Proper archiving.
Archiving and everything else. And they have photos and everything else. And it, it, it was awesome when you walked in there and you looked at their history and it was all laid out in front of you. So they had a couple of chairs where you can sit and actually browse the stuff and everything else. So yeah, it was, that was really neat, too.
Not a bad suggestion. We'll see if Gerber's got some extra money to run. He's a real hard way, so yeah. Any other questions? All right. Well, thank you very much. Always a pleasure to come and share the highlights with you and I hope for doing it again next year.
Thank you for the report and thank you for your dedication to the library and your service to the board.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Next up is a special presentation and remarks on the community garden.
Hello again. My name is Amber Marks and joining me today is Erin. She is a part of the nonprofit that I will mention shortly. I am coming to you with an updated garden proposal answering some of the questions that you had raised the first time that we presented this. Along with a more specified plan of what we'd love to do and costs associated with that, proposed layouts, and a few images with proposed fencing, raised bed designs, just expanding on the idea a bit further. And then I want to bring Erin up here to address a lot of the other questions that you had raised the first time.
As a musician, I'm used to that. I'm Dr. Erin Weir. I've been a seasonal resident of Whitehall for over 10 years. I'm the founder and executive director of a new nonprofit called The Servant Musician. Formed for the purposes of serving the White Lake area, we received our 501(c)(3) status on October 8th, 2024. Our mission is to enhance well-being and strengthen community bonds that provide meaningful support to those in need. Through service-oriented engagement, servant musicians strive to create inclusive and uplifting spaces where musicians and music foster healing, connection, and positive social change. I'm here today to express the servant musicians' support for the proposed community garden programs. They offer more than just fresh food. They are a tangible expression of community care, sustainability, and belonging. Their goals directly align with our mission to enhance well-being and foster connection through inclusive, community-centered efforts. We believe the garden program has the power to unite neighbors, create safer nurturing spaces, and provide hands-on opportunities for healing and civic engagement similarly and in harmony with community music making. I have full support from my board of directors to collaborate with Amber Marks on the garden program. You can find my board members and their biographies on our website, theservantmusician.com. And I can answer questions later during public comment if you'd like.
One of the greatest things that comes with partnership to live with Erin and her organization is we get access to a lot of things such as like a website, protections that come with the 501(c)(3). She has experience writing grants, so we could access that for funding for the community garden. Feels like it really answers a lot of the questions that were brought up the first time on with funding and how the garden would tangibly work. And then we've met with a bunch of other community members as well that weren't able to be here tonight, unfortunately. And just have seen a lot of community interest since the initial presentation. And Kip Meach is one of the community members. But overall, I've seen a lot of engagement, which is exciting. And we'd love to answer any questions that you might have.
Anyone have any questions?
Is proposing to put the beds on a blacktop surface. Going to make it hit warm?
I think it's concrete, isn't it?
Is it concrete?
I think it's concrete.
The tennis court's over here.
There's asphalt.
Is it on the asphalt?
I thought it was old asphalt. I just wondered if, you know, maybe just throw something out there, talk to the city about maybe taking the area and removing the asphalt and filling it all up.
Yes.
And then, and then you could have a larger garden area and you wouldn't have to spend, you'd spend more money on fencing, but you'd spend, you wouldn't spend any money on beds.
Right.
Because then everybody would just have plots with walking areas in them.
Yeah.
Just, just throw out there, I just thought with it, being blacktop, that if you put the beds on top of it and it gets fairly warm out, it's going to dry things out, I thought, fairly fast.
Yeah, it's definitely a valid concern to bring up. There's, I feel like there's a lot of ways that we can go about it. One positive that the raised beds did bring is that they're easily collapsible. So it could be sort of like a capsule or like a proof of concept the first year to see if it gets the engagement that it would need to get. And then it could be removed and taken down and placed elsewhere if another location turns out to be more successful. So that was why we erred towards doing the raised beds, but I'm certainly open to really whatever's going to be asked for the community.
Raised beds are also nicer for people that are a little older like myself that can't bend over. Easily get up, you have to get up.
Yeah.
Um, so I guess my question is, what, what are you looking for from us? Are you looking for a funding source? Are you looking for a property or what, what is your, what is your, for both or what is your, your goal?
Ideally, what we would love to get from the city is permission to use that land for the community garden and potential to use the stiget for water use. We can also incorporate rain barrels if that is of interest. And then if you aren't able to provide funding, that would be wonderful. Or if not, we can seek grants instead or in addition to any funding you're able to provide.
Well, from my perspective, I don't know about everybody here, I mean, this is the third time she's been here. I, she's very persistent and I think the concept is great. And I don't know if we can make a motion at this point to, to allow them to use that spot, but it's sitting empty right now. And gardening season has started.
I still have a question. But I agree, I agree. I, I appreciate your, your motivation and your dedication.
Thank you.
Now, you've got several different options. Which, which one do you think is the most feasible at this point?
So in terms of design and layout, I am a big proponent of option A. I think it's aesthetically pleasing and also very functional and just a good use of space with providing some space for benches and tool station as well. But it is the largest option. That's pretty ambitious for the first year, I do have to admit. So we could apply that design to a smaller layout or we could go with some of the other proposed layouts as well. All bring positive aspects, just a little bit different.
Do you have any funding lined up so far?
We do not yet. We are in the process of bringing a grant, I believe it's for a Walmart grant for community garden and seeking other grants as well.
And I think I mentioned Dirt Doggers before.
Yes, I've reached out to them. Have not heard anything back yet, but I'm still trying to get in contact with them.
I've got to contact them.
That would be wonderful. Thank you.
Because they would be helpful. I, I do, I agree with you. I like the A, but I, I think it might, if, if, if we were supporting it, I would feel more comfortable with a smaller option to start.
That's totally fair.
But.
So, so A is just, is the full size of the tennis court, this area, is that?
No, that's still about half of it, I would say.
So A is only half of the tennis court size?
It's quite a large space with both of the tennis courts there.
It's 40 boxes, Jeff. So we've got 40 boxes, we've got 27, and we've got 18.
That, like I said, I, I'm all for, I mean, that's sitting empty is, she can use it as she needs is, I mean, if they want to spread the boxes out for the first year and then as they add more boxes to it, I think that would be a great idea and un- if they wanna spread the boxes out for the first year, then as they add more boxes to it, I think that will be a, a great idea, and I'm, I'm gonna put forth a motion here shortly.
Wait for a minute.
One of the other places, just before I forget, because I'm always forgetful sometimes. Um, when the woods came into Whitehall, which is the cannabis shop at the top of the hill, um, they had made mention that they are very community-oriented. Um, not to say that's not what we wanna grow down there, but they do have that expertise, and kinda like the old science lab at school, where one of those plants would pop up every once in a while, but anyways, it's a good point. Um, may wanna get with them and see if they can come up with some kind of a grant or some funding for you as well. I mean, they, like I said, when they came here, I was on the planning commission, and the president of that organization came forward and said that, hey, you know, we're all about that, and I don't think anybody's been up there to talk to them about anything like that, so.
Yeah.
A community garden with some positive for them would be great as well, so.
For sure, I'll definitely reach out.
I have a question. Do you have, um, some people lined up that can build these boxes and that, and and do you have people that are interested in maintaining the garden, watering, whatever you gotta do? I mean, if you're in raised boxes, you don't have a lot of weeds, but, you know, are, are people interested in, have people approached you on this?
Yes, that's what I've been working on the past couple of weeks since I initially presented, is gathering that support and seeing if there is that support in the community, and so far, I have gathered a handful of people that would be interested in participating. Um, and the boxes are actually designed by another community member, and, um, so we'd be able to lead the design on that.
I like the idea a lot.
Thank you.
And it's a good location, a great location, quite honestly.
It's bringing use to a space that's currently not adding any community value.
Yeah.
I have, can I speak one?
Sure.
And the backing of my organization has substantial community members that are known for a substantial community service, so she's, she has our support. We have ten people in our organization now.
Great. All right, thank you.
I, I'm just wondering if, because, you know, we have our budget coming up, if you're going to ask for some funds. Um, and there's, it seems like it's approximately two, approximately three, and then three, three-seven, so I, I guess that my point to council is, is maybe we vote to let her use the property and then, but then she just needs to come up with the amount, and she could, she, she could apply it to whatever option she wants? Does that make sense?
Yeah, that was gonna be, yeah, just, just allow them, my motion was gonna be just to allow them to use that portion of property and, and do what they need to do to get this on the, on the, uh, on the way.
But the water access be permitted, but, uh, as well?
I don't see where we'd have, and she'd be having some water for plants.
I, 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 I would like to certainly consult staff and, and legal on this issue before we give approval for this use. I think I support it, I think it's a great idea, I'd love to see it happen, but I think we're a little premature on wanting to vote on this tonight. I think certainly DPW needs to be consulted, as, as well as legal staff, as far as what we're giving permission to do needs to be very succinctly stated.
Yeah, we'd wanna have a lease.
Some sort of agreement, yes.
You know, it's not a complicated lease, but we'd want something.
My, my suggestion would be, um, the, these are for a three-foot by four-foot box, which is wood and totes and everything else, excluding the dirt and the compost, is about ninety to a hundred dollars per box. And it's what I figured out here, and, um, my thing is if we could, I've said it before, I think we ought to rip up at least part of that asphalt, and then we could use the dirt that's underneath, we could use the compost and the dirt to mix it in, and it would be more environmentally friendly anyway than buying a hundred totes and extra wood and everything else. You know, I don't know what the cost would be to remove some of that asphalt, but it would, that to me seems to make more sense, and then you could do better than a, bigger than a three-by-four parcel.
Yeah, that's a possibility, that's certainly something to consider.
I like the idea of the boxes, especially to start out, when you can put them out there tomorrow and start if you wanted to, and then you can move them around and basically add more, add more as you need to, and then, you know, ultimately, maybe there's a section that, that's in the ground, and then a section that's boxes, I think it, it allows, at least for now, a little bit more, um, mobility and rearrangement versus putting it in the ground to start.
And we thought of it too, I'm sorry, we thought of it too as like a proof of concept the first year. Like if it doesn't work out, or if it turns out another location is gonna get better traffic and better engagement, we do have the opportunity to move it, we're not committed to one spot necessarily. And we can, it is a large piece of property over there, like there is opportunity to expand or to change what it looks like in the coming years.
Or if it works there, you can expand elsewhere.
Yeah, exactly.
So at, at, at this point, I would, I would like to, to, uh, to direct you to connect with, uh, our city clerk, and you can talk with DPW and certainly with our legal staff.
Yeah, I can work with them for some years.
So someone from your organization can be the point person to, to do that.
I'd be happy to do so.
I think we're all in agreement that we, we support this idea, but I think there's some steps that need to be taken before we make a legal decision.
Totally understandable, thank you. Anything else I can answer at this time?
Anyone else have any comments on it?
So do we need a motion to direct staff to come up with a lease, or are we just wanting to do it on your own?
I don't think we, the motion sounds like. I think we're, we're all in consensus that this is something that we'd like to do, but there's some steps that need to be taken, so. I, I guess once a, some sort of contract or leases is drawn up, then that would be enough point with this council would be voting on.
Yeah, we can certainly have that for next meeting.
Next meeting.
Yeah.
Sounds great. I appreciate your time and support.
Thank you, thank you. All right, next up is the consent agenda. I'll make a motion, motion to approve the consent agenda, is submitted.
Second.
Yeah, second. Second, is there any questions? Consent agenda.
I have, uh, one question on accounts payable, I don't know if I'm gonna answer or not. Page four or six for shade for, uh, water installs. Is that part of our program to, you know, for the lead line?
Yes.
Whatever somebody here, is that what that is?
That is.
Okay.
That's correct.
That's, that's all I had as far as the consent agenda goes. I do have a question as far as the, uh, if you wanna call it the Marina Advisory Committee, um, is, does anybody know if the reason why they didn't, weren't able to come up with a forum was because there was a lack of communication on when the meeting was, or people were just too busy to worry about it? Maybe, I don't know, Deb knows?
I don't know, I was disappointed as well. I mean, it's, there are only two meetings of that board per year, and only three of us.
Yeah, I was unavailable as I was working, so.
Yeah, so, yeah, so I'm not sure, and the other thing I wasn't sure about is if we could try again. The next meeting's not scheduled till October, so the season's beginning to start.
Steve, would you know that from prior experience, if they can schedule another meeting to replace that one?
I believe that that can be, just, just a matter of finding the time when all the, the, uh, people involved can be there.
I would definitely like to see that happen, so we're not starting off the season without the board meeting.
Right, and I, and I think we should have that, so, um, reach out with Brenda?
Yep.
First, maybe Brenda, you could give, give the proposed dates, we could do that?
Mm-hmm.
Mayor?
Yes.
Uh, the, one of the communications is from Cara Jacob from Health West, and she's offering a presentation on psychological first aid, which I thought was very interesting, just talking about training up people to, um, free courses to work with, um, people in after-traumatic situations, um, and, you know, one of the things that was mentioned was like a natural disaster. I would definitely like to hear from her, and so I'd like to, I don't know, do we need a motion to accept that, or?
No, she's, um, normally they just contact me and request it, and, um, I schedule them. Uh, she, I don't know if she's here, but she was gonna speak, she may not be, um, during public comment, but I could reach out to her, we have an official, you know, special presentation.
Yeah, either the special presentation, or you put it on the work session calendar, either one will work.
Right, so I'll reach out to her.
Thank you, it's, it's very, um, I don't know, could you even, is this something you could put on the social media page? Just to let people know, I think it's very, very interesting, very helpful.
Mm-hmm.
Anything else on the consent agenda? Hearing none? All those in favor of the consent agenda, say yes.
Yes.
Any others who would say no? We have a consent agenda. Next up, messages. Well, let's, uh, start on the left.
Okay, well, one of my messages was about the library, just to thank them for coming and just thank them for all of the work that they're doing. Uh, the other message I have is about the visit to Fremont last week, um, that I attended. Just a couple of hours, I was able to, it was a ten-to-twelve hour day, and I, I was not able to do that, but I was there in the morning, very welcoming council staff, the mayor, great presentation, I thought, and then at least we could see their, their sizable city hall, um, that, that made some of us think, I, I'm sure, um, it was beautiful. Uh, and then, um, they actually have a rifle shooting range, the police department, in the basement. Now, I'm, I'm, I'm just gonna mention that. Um, and then, um, I, they did also introduce a social worker, they shared a social worker that wears a badge that, with another community, and that I think would, is a really interesting concept. And then
Funded by grants.
Funded by grants, um, they've got a lot going on, is, is, I, I think we're gonna probably sit down and look at some of the questions, their downtown is thriving. Um, and then the other thing I liked is, right downtown, they have the old high school, the old building, and they turned it into senior housing, so the seniors can walk through the downtown, so it was very impressive, and I am glad I was able to attend a little bit.
I also attended and echo everything that Tanya said, it was a, it was a very interesting day and, um, great staff, great, great folks, and they will be coming here on the twenty-first. So it's a, as it's called, an exchange, so we went there and now they'll come here, so it, it's great, we have a lot of, a lot of commonalities, which was interesting to see, so hopefully we can have some further discussions and, um, you know, do a deep breath on some takeaways and learnings. Um, also, this week, I attended the launch party for a smart buoy, so the White Lake Association got a grant from Eagle for forty thousand dollars to put a smart buoy in the lake, so if you're a boater, you'll see it out there, it's very big, somebody said it looked like a minion, it's a yellow color, I thought it looked like a Big Hunk of Cheese. Um, so it's gonna be, it's gonna be pretty visible, and it'll do a lot of different, um, collecting a lot of different information on, on a, on a real time. Um, so it's a very interesting, interesting project that the group is taking on, and, um, I forgot to bring the information card, um, but they are always accepting, um, new members, so if it's of interest to you, I invite you to check it out, it's the White Lake Association. Membership is, is relatively inexpensive, I know the city's a member. Um, so that was, it's, it's, doing some interesting work, it's great to be a part of. Um, also, I got to attend the, um, presentations for the community fund that, um, they granted the, um, playhouse, I think it was twelve thousand five hundred dollars or contributed towards their summer program, so a lot of good, um, a lot of good groups got, um, got funded for some projects they're working on, so it was great to be a part of that as well.
Well, you were also at the legislative breakfast.
You're right. Take all the, the legislative breakfast happened on Monday, yes, was that yesterday? Wow. And it was, it started very early, so I'm not really a morning person, so it's pretty rough, it started at seven, um, but a lot of good, a lot of good conversation and, and information there, too, so if you have opportunity, they're, they're planning to pick it back up again, I think it was on hiatus for a little while, uh, but they're gonna pick that back up, so if you have opportunity next year when that, when that rolls around, I would invite you to participate, it's very interesting.
I have to start, too. A bunch of us were there.
We were, yeah, we were busy this basketball week, thanks, that's all.
Um, I've been out of town almost every day since the last meeting, so I really don't have anything.
Okay, yeah. Um, from the looks of it, stick pickup went very well, um, guys came through town, they did a very job, um. See, we still have some people that have leaves and sticks out there, like the city put up a reminder, um, it's done, so. Pack 'em away till next year. Lisa Sticks. Leaves, you could probably take over the, they still take those over to the do they take those over at the?
I don't know.
I know they, they used to have a big leaf pile over there.
I don't recall.
Okay.
I, I, I can veri- I can verify.
All right, thank you. That's all I have.
Uh, I just have one thing, uh, last council meeting, uh, I referenced the letter that Councilman Zimer had sent to, uh, all the other council members about, uh, his opinions on how the playhouse committee thing went, and his recommendations and everything. And I asked about reading it into the record, so it was public record, and I think we had decided it was gonna be put into the, uh, communications on the consent agenda.
I didn't, I don't recall that.
Okay, well, I thought that's what I remembered, that's why I didn't end up reading it, because you said you'd add a copy of it.
Yeah, but I didn't know that, that you wanted it put into, you wanted it put into this packet, is that what you wanted?
Well, I, I just, I wanted it to be public record. You know, that's, that's all I had.
Um, yeah, I went to Fremont. It's amazing, when you look at the difference, we have three thousand people, Fremont has about forty-five hundred, but I think their acreage must be at least twice the size of Whitehall, it's, it's amazing what all is encompassed in that, in that city limits of Fremont, and it's, it's a pretty, pretty nice town, that, they, uh, the beautiful library, like everybody mentioned, the wastewater system is huge, and, uh, the parks, they have really nice parks, we, we have really nice parks too, but they're quite a bit different, but, yeah, it was it's amazing what the difference, I guess, of fifteen hundred people makes, and what a city is. They have a very busy street, goes through the middle of their downtown, too, and their businesses are, seem to be doing real well. And so I guess that's not an excuse for our downtown does not be doing well, because they can do it with their busy street, they got big trucks riding through town, and I don't know, we just, we just gotta get our town going, and I think that'll be one of the priorities for our new, uh, city manager, I would hope, so that's all I have, thank you.
Well, the, uh, visit to Fremont was very enlightening, it's, uh, they have a very generous, uh, sponsor in Gerber.
Yeah.
They have a three-hundred-million-dollar community endowment fund that, uh, just helps them a lot. They're a beautiful town, and they were very gracious, and I hope to, uh, return the hospitality when they, they come to visit us on, on the twenty-first. We've also, as people that attended our previous meeting here, we're in the process of searching for a new city manager, and it was discussed, community involvement. I certainly wanna hear from the community as we move along in this process. The more people that have a voice at the table, it's better for all of us. And we turned on the splash pad today, so. Anybody that wants to get down there? It's a good place to cool Anybody that wants to get down there, it's a good place to cool off. All right, next up is public comment.
My name's Kim Seer, I'm the, uh, county commissioner for District One, which includes this area. I've just been recently added to another, uh, committee, a local emergency planning committee, and another committee also. Um, and we had a meeting today, and it looks like, I see on your, uh, agenda that you have a resolution coming up to, uh, accept their, um, hazard mitigation plan. Uh, their goal is to get that, uh, a resolution from each and every, uh, municipality, the townships, the cities, the villages, everybody to buy into this. And, and mainly what we're looking at is organization and coordination, uh, coordination of the resources to address any different kinds of hazards that we might, uh, that we might encounter. And, uh, it was pretty encouraging, I think it's a, I think it's a good idea, because I, I think we are somewhat, uh, disconnected when it comes to hell, there's an emergency, what do we do now? And, uh, they're, they're gonna go to great lengths, the new, uh, emergency manager we have is pretty, uh, detailed. The document they sent you is seven hundred and twelve pages, so... I haven't read it, by the way.
Thank you.
I'm Carolyn Gates, I'm a Whitehall resident, and I'm here in support of this community garden. I think it's a great idea, and I'm, was very pleased with the present, presentation tonight. Also learned a lot about it, and for me, with raised beds, it makes a lot of sense. So I'm, I'm glad that all of you are supporting it, and I'm happy and excited to see what goes on in the future. So thank you very much for accepting that proposal that she put before you tonight.
Thank you.
Afternoon, I'm here to ask for some help, um, I'm a city resident, and we have a water problem in front of my house, and I've gone to the DT, but DPW and everything, and don't seem to be getting a response and stuff, so I don't know if the city council can push them along, but it literally floods across the street. And the last big rain we had here about six weeks ago, whatever, when I drove out of my driveway, the water was up to my window in my car and stuff. And eventually it goes away in a few days, but it's just like a mess, so, you know. I mean, they do a great job, you know, plowing the snow and picking up the leaves, but just can't get them, I've talked directly to somebody in the DPW twice about it and stuff, so I don't know if there's any way we can get something done.
What's the address?
Um, I'm at the corner of Livingston and Lincoln, it makes a ninety degree turn there. And, and I think part of the problem, there's drains on both sides of the road, but part of it is the snowplow, I think, you know, there's no sidewalk, so it pushes the dirt. You know, it needs to have like a channel or something taken care of, maybe with some stone or a little asphalt or something like that. And the only other thing is, the garden idea is great, maybe the question was on the ground or the beds, maybe a combination of the two might be better for us seniors, you know. Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Carolyn made me hear of Whitehall. I, I asked about the deer hunting on city property, but at that time, they said there were no conclusions. So I'm wondering, are people interested in this being done? And how are you going to pick who does it? And how are you going to announce the dates to the people, and whether they should be in the parks or the cemeteries?
I, I, I believe we have a policy as far as who can do it and when it's allowed.
For the new, um, public property?
Well, I don't believe we've approved...
No, we have.
Any, any, uh, any hunting on public property, parks and, and schools, school property.
So did people send the responses?
Yes, we're, yeah, we're gonna finish out the end of this month and just wait for the, all the surveys to come in. People are still paying their bills for the water, even though they were due, so we're just gonna wait to the end of the month and have a final tally, yeah.
Just so you're aware of it, that is one of the questions I posed to Fremont, because again, they're close, I said, what do you guys do? And they told us what they did, so we have that idea as well. They actually have their police department go out and, uh, dispatch a number of deer based on, uh, population. And they have the deer, uh, taken care of, and they give them to, uh, the local food bank, or, so they don't go to waste. But, um, I asked the city manager, I do believe, at that time, and he said it's worked very well. And we explained what we do, and he kinda went, the light bulb went on with him too, and he's like, well, that's a cool idea too. So again, there was a pretty mutual or good explanation amongst both of us, and they may run with that as well, so give us options.
Thank you.
Stay tuned.
Ryan Regal, um, property manager at one oh one East Colby, one oh one West Colby, one oh five West Colby, and one oh seven West Colby. Partner at Pitkins and partner at Harwood Flats. Um, there's three things I wanna really shoot real, pass you real quick here, um, roads. So, and I could be wrong on this, but I'm thinking we probably have four or five, a handful of major roads with, that show the most traffic, and I, I, I'm, I'm just guessing, so I could be wrong. Benston, White Lake Drive, Mirs, Colby, Lake Street, maybe a couple other ones, but I would guess those are our busiest roads. I wanna ask if there's any way that Lake Street could be pushed up on the priority list. The reason being is not all Lake Street is bad, um, but certain parts of it are pretty bad. Part of Lake Street is part of the shoreline trail, not only does it go along the lake, which we try to showcase for our community, but the shoreline trail, the pike goes from the border, Indiana Michigan border, all the way up to, I think, Manistee. And a piece of Lake Street is part of that shoreline trail. Um, that should be a showcase for us. From White Lake Drive to Lion's Den is pretty bad, but then from like Lion's Den to the railroad trestle, it's not bad at all. But then from the railroad trestle to about Napa, it gets pretty bad again. So if there's, I guess, if there's any way that can be pushed up on their priority list, I know you have priorities, different roads for different times and all that, but to me, that's, I, I take it every day, so I feel the bump. So it's, um, to showcase to the community, it's part of the, part of it is part of the shoreline trail, and it's right along the lake, I think that should be a priority. So that's one item, the second item is, thank you for the leaf pickup, and thank you for the great job on the sidewalks this winter in the downtown, it is appreciated, both of those things, awesome. Thank you so much for both of those. Last thing, uh, I mentioned I'm a partner at Harwood Flats, we open in January, we are full. Without you, all of you, that doesn't happen. That was a ten-year tax abatement, and if you wouldn't approve that, that would not have happened. So thank you for that tax abatement and being part of this, thirty-two units. We're, we're very happy, and you should be happy. I truly believe if we want any vibrancy, Steve talked about downtown, if we want any vibrancy at all in the downtown area, we have to have housing, and that's, we're off to a good start, I think. But, um, again, thanks for that, and without you, that, that does not happen, so, thank you.
Thank you, can I make a comment on Lake Street too? Lake Street, to my knowledge, from the last time I was on councils, being held off until the construction of Tannery Bay is finished.
And that, that part, I don't wanna interrupt you, but front of Tannery Bay is pretty nice, like I said, from the Eagles to the trestle is pretty nice.
The reason they did that is because of the trucks and the heavy traffic, that they didn't wanna redo the road and they have it all beat up by the trucks, last I knew. And that's been, it's been a few years, and we're getting to the point where it's almost done, so...
And it's, and, and right in front of Tannery Bay, I think it's, like I said, from Eagles to Trestle, it's, it's pretty good. But, and, but that other section, yeah, the, from Napa down to that trestle was not good, and then from White Lake Drive to Lion's Den, it's, there's, it's pretty bad. So not at all Lake Street is bad, don't get me wrong, but, but the part of the shoreline trail was that first part from White Lake Drive to, you know, the Eagles.
And I think that's the way a lot of those trucks were traveling back in the day, was White Lake Drive to Lake Street, when they were running all that stuff out of there, so...
But, you know, like I said, it's part of the shoreline trail, I, I really think it should be a priority, it's probably one of our busier roads, anyway.
I don't know if Steve remembers, but, uh, there, there was something on Lake Street, that section of Lake Street, from like the dam down to White Lake Drive, had something to do with a grant, it got pushed one year because of the grant. And if we waited, I don't know, you know, Scott's not here, there, there was some kind of a grant, and if we waited a year, it was like another hundred...
I think it was supposed to be this, this year.
It was like a hundred fifty thousand dollar grant or something like that.
Hundred fifty thousand dollars doesn't buy much of a road, I'll tell you that. And we've got the issue of the, we have to replace the lift station down there, and I, it doesn't make sense to put a new road in and then have it tore up by the, by the lift station. And the lift station is gonna be far more expensive than the road.
Did we get the grant, do you know? Or did it not happen?
I don't know.
I just remember there was something about a grant, and it got pushed for about one year, moved up or pushed out.
Roads is a, is a discussion that we have to have, and we're gonna continue to have, but funding is...
Respect. Thank you.
That's gonna be scheduled for this year, isn't it?
I don't think there's any scheduled for this year.
All right.
I'll get back at the mic here, can I say? Hi, Norm Kilderson again, resident of Whitehall, um, PFA, Psychological First Aid. Glad to see that that's being offered. When I worked at Health West, I worked very closely with Kara Jaikle, I was on the Psychological First Aid team, I've been trained in it. Went on many PFA responses around Muskegon County during my time in Health West. It's a fantastic program. It is designed to send a team of trained people in to a crisis situation and to help the people that are affected by it. It just gives them someone to, to share some space with, we're not trained therapists, that's not why we're there, we're simply there to provide aid and comfort, and also do a little bit of triage to determine if they might need some extra services, and connect them with those services. The training is, uh, pretty, it's not difficult, it's not easy, it's, it's a good training program. You don't need alphabet soup behind your name to get trained, so anybody in the community can get trained to do it. And I, when I saw that the discussion was coming up, I wanted to put in my two cents worth and put in a real plug for it, because it's a really valuable program, and I know that it makes a difference. So, that's it, thank you.
My name is Mary Waters Grant, I live on Lake Street, and despite what the previous speaker said, um, the area from Lion's Den to where the bike path begins is terrible, and it has huge holes on it, and if you're a bike rider, you come off the, the, you know, the bike path there along Lake Street, and there are big potholes and other things that your tire can fall right in. So I don't want you to think that the road, uh, between White Lake Drive and, um, Lion's Den is the worst part, that continues down. I'm in the sixteen hundred block of Lake Street, and that's still terrible too. And I know we're not on the list until I think it was two thousand twenty-nine for repair, but, uh, again, if that could be moved up, that'd be great, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any more, okay. I don't believe we have any old business, so we will move on to new business. First is the budget schedule. You had the, the schedule for the proceedings that we need to approve this?
I think abortion to approve the schedule, budget meetings for Monday, May nineteenth at five P M, and for Tuesday, May twenty-seventh, as a public hearing for the budget.
Yeah, second, they moved to the second, is there any discussion?
I would like to see the May nineteenth budget work session for council moved, I cannot be there. Uh, I think it's, uh, other than probably figuring out who our new city manager is going to be. I think the budget process is probably the most important thing that we do as a council. And I would like to be present at it, and I have previous engagement out of town, will not be available on the nineteenth or the twentieth.
No, I can draw the motion, but we gotta have some dates to pull in here, so, how are we gonna do that?
And I also will be out of town on the nineteenth and twentieth, so, and I certainly would like to be there, so...
So it's this week?
Hmm?
We have to move to this week?
We have to move to that, and...
And I'm gone from the fourteenth to the twentieth.
That's tomorrow, right?
Yes, tomorrow.
Wow.
Is there, does, does there have to be a certain amount of time between the budget work session and the public hearing and the voting on it?
Only what you want.
Yeah, not legally.
Not legally, we, right.
So, we're gonna do the twenty-second?
Twenty-sixth?
No.
No, I'll be in...
Twenty-second? Twenty-third?
Twenty-sixth.
No.
Twenty-fourth?
Twenty-second, so, if you...
Twenty-sixth would be another Monday, if everybody can be there.
The day before.
Is it?
Yes.
You're gonna get double time ahead.
No, I do.
I think it's gonna be the same, now and then, that one of us isn't gonna be there, gonna have several brutal...
So it has to be approved by one?
What's that?
Well, oh, that, the twenty-seventh is when we have to approve the budget, because it has to be approved, um, by the end of May, unless you do a special meeting, so...
We're gonna have a meeting that same day?
The only problem is, is you, whatever suggestions you make, or, you know, any changes you make to the budget...
Make any changes.
It'd be, you know... And I know that, that Monday, yours is when Scott can make it, beyond that, I think it gets a little dicey the rest of that week as well. So, like you said, Debbie, it's either gonna be moving it up to this week, which would give you less time to review it.
Well, we can...
Oh, yeah, and there's too many people that can't make it, so...
Don't look, you're gonna see our...
I have a, I have a question for a while if I can.
Yes.
Um, on this page here, I, um, it says, the, the budgets must be submitted to the city council at the meeting nearest to the first Monday, Monday of May. Is that on that particular date, or that would be the last day that you could do that?
According to...
That's the budgets, that's the department budgets.
That, that's our charter, our charter dictates when we present it to you as council, and at the meetings, that's why I asked Scott, can we give it to them? So I was gonna deliver it earlier, uh, just to your homes, but the charter specifies that it has to be at a meeting at the, uh, nearest, the first Monday of May. So our first meeting of May...
It specifies that particular date, or not, any time before up to that date?
No, it says specific to that date, so, uh, the Monday closest to our first meeting, our first meeting in May is today, um, and it has to be at, at the meeting.
Because the, the reason I asked that is in February, I asked if we could move up the process and get these earlier.
Right, but as we look at the charter, that's exactly what we're looking at.
Okay.
Well, I think we're just gonna have to look at where we can get the most people on council, because it looks like there's a lot of...
Yeah, and you'll need your city manager as well, so... Yeah, and you'll need your city manager as well, so.
Brenda, are you able to do?
Survey Monkey or some kind of.
Do Duropaul?
Yeah, I can do that.
Okay. That might help.
Does it quorum five?
Pardon me?
How many do we need? Four or five here?
Four. Is there a way to get, like, if we did go with it on the nineteenth, since that's the majority right now? Is there a way for Scott to review it with Scott beforehand and take input?
Yeah, absolutely.
Is that doable, or, or if it's another day when another one of us sees a situation? So, another day works and somebody else is out, what are the options?
Yeah, and I think that's definitely an option, is to have any council members. You're welcome to come and ask any questions or discuss anything about the budget prior to even that nineteenth, as we have scheduled, so that you're prepared to discuss it at that point. But also, you know, dictate whatever wishes you have, or what you're leaning towards, or whatever. So, at that particular meeting, it can be voiced in your absence. So it's definitely an option.
So we have the, the proposed budget tonight?
Yeah, you have the budgets now delivered to you. And the first discussion of it and all of your, what you're thinking about it would be on the nineteenth, as we have scheduled at this point, as we're proposing this.
So how many do we have for the nineteenth?
You'd have five.
You'd have five.
Maybe we should just go ahead and do it. Is there a different time on the nineteenth though, early morning before you leave, Scott?
No, I leave Friday. Leave Friday and come back late Tuesday night.
That, that would be my, my suggestion, just to go ahead with the nineteenth. But then are we still in the same vote for the twenty-seventh?
No, you, we, we would have to still do it on the twenty-seventh. That's, the public hearing would be scheduled then, and that's like the last date that you could do approval of the budget.
Do we have a quorum?
On the twenty-seventh?
Yeah.
It's a regular council meeting.
Yeah, but I, I know people have been, I won't be here, but I know Debbie's not there. I think I'm the only one.
I think so.
Okay, well then I guess we can probably keep it, can't we?
I would, I would suggest we keep the nineteenth and Scott, myself can email any thoughts on, on the budget.
Yeah.
It's not, not as though we're not gonna have a voice in it, it's just, we'll be at that meeting.
Yeah.
We'll send a note to you, or to Scott, or?
To, to Scott, you can do it directly. You can meet with him, discuss anything, ask questions.
Yeah, between, what do you mean? Friday morning, between now and Friday morning. You can meet with him.
While I'm walking behind the lawn mower, I can look at the budget for it.
Okay. Whatever. So we have a, a motion to accept this nineteenth and twenty-seventh.
Yeah, a motion and a support.
Motion and a support. And we'll, we'll roll call on that.
Okay. Uh, Sikkendo?
Yes.
Zimmer?
Yes.
Hillebrand?
Yes.
Cabala?
Yes.
Brown?
No.
Holmstrom?
Yes.
Salter?
Yes.
So that will be Monday, the nineteenth. It's when the council will discuss this budget. And on the twenty-seventh is when the council will vote on the budget. Okay.
That's also, sorry, first question, that's also the public.
Public hearings.
Public hearings, so what, what do we do if at the public hearing, there are subjects that come up that, you know, we, we said we wouldn't have a work session on the budget right before, in case we made changes. But couldn't public hearing influence some changes as well?
It could, and, and I wouldn't think it would be massive, I would hope it wouldn't be massive, but certainly a change could be made at that point, necessary.
Alright. Next up is tag day request.
I'll make a motion to approve the tag day request as submitted.
Second.
Just so everybody knows, it's for the American Legion on June thirteenth, yes. On Friday the thirteenth.
Okay. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Say no. As approved. Next up is traffic control order number two four zero. Which.
I'll make a motion and put it on the floor to approve order two forty.
Second.
Wait in second.
We're on the floor. So I do have a question. Does that mean, looking at this, so between thirty foot and thirty foot east, you watch that fire hydrant, it's no parking still?
Correct. Which is state law.
Yes, yeah.
So can we get a, just a clarification from the police department for the public, what this is? Because I don't know if they've all seen this.
There was a traffic control order, my understanding that came about under the past Parks and Recreation Director that prohibited parking on the curb or in the public right of way all along River Street there. It came to our attention recently that, that existed. And looking at it, there's no reason to prohibit that. Not for traffic, not for safety. And so that, that's why it is brought up at this time, is to withdraw that traffic control order from our recent, what, one, one seventy-four.
I have a question, can the public talk about it? Because it wasn't really specified what was said.
We're not on public comment now. So this is, this is next to, to Funnel Field, on the north end of Funnel Field on River Street.
Where does, where does the hydrant, I don't recall where the hydrant sits on that. Is it right across from Mohawk, or pretty close to that?
No. No, in the middle between Mohawk and.
Okay.
So it's, we're saying parking will be allowed there, except within thirty feet of that hydrant?
Correct.
Okay. So that's what we're, we're allowing, we're changing. It was previously no parking the entire?
Yes.
So now we're talking about allowing parking except normal distance from a fire hydrant.
Do we have complaints about people not being able to park there? I, I guess I'm just not, I mean, if it's not necessary, that's, that's one reason, but I, I didn't.
I would have loved to talk during public commenting venue, but there is massive complaints with the neighborhood.
I'll explain, there was a complaint about someone parking in that area. That's what brought it to our attention. There's no reason to prohibit it if somebody wants to park there and walk their dog out and have their dog have a little run there. And that's, that's what brought it to our attention. There was no other complaint, only the one that brought it to our attention.
Okay.
Just a clarification, so the complaint was, because somebody did park there when it was not, not that it's no parking and I can't park there and I want to.
Right.
Is there another signage, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Are we going to regulate vertical or pull in parking, or is it just however they want to park there? I mean.
It's, what would apply to public right of way.
Okay, alright, alright. Hopefully somebody didn't hit the lawn mower.
That would be a really. It won't make a lot of.
Do we need a roll call on this?
No.
I don't think so, not, not a dollar, so.
No.
Alright, all those in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, say no. Traffic control order two forty is approved. Next up is Resolution twenty-five dash eleven, Muskegon County Hazard Mitigation Plan. Seven hundred and what page, fourteen page, something?
I will motion to approve that, I do have some comments that I gave you as well.
I'll, I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second, alright, open it up for discussion.
I'm not gonna read them, but I'll make them available to the public if they want them. But I, I did, I guess you could call it skim reading it. I'm good at, I learned speed reading in college, it really helps. Even so, I did not read it word by word. But I looked it over well enough to pull together some, some comments that I wanted council to have, even though I approve it. And mainly, my comments just say, you know, I'm, these are going to the folks who developed the plan that I, you know, I want to thank them for the work. And our police chief, who served on the advisory committee. And our clerk, who also served on the advisory committee, I appreciate that. And I thought it was just about eight hundred, I thought it was like seven hundred and forty-seven. Of course, some of that is the appendix, but there's, there's a number of the things. A couple of the few things I want to highlight is just that maybe they could make a public facing summary. Because most people, it, it's a very thorough plan, but most people are probably not reviewed. And, and none of this would inhibit my approval. They mentioned model ordinances and tools that they're thinking about making for municipalities as far as dealing with the, the priority hazards, and, which I think is great. They also are talking about funding, and I just want to make sure that we get in line for any funding. And just to, to clear it up, it is basically doing their best job of identifying hazards that affect people in the county, and then how the county is going to deal with those and work with municipalities, which really jives well with our discussion, you know, as far as after the emergency. I think there's just one last thing I want to mention. They also talk about relying on the National Weather Service and NOAA, which is, is concerning given the recent cuts, so I'm wondering, you know, have they looked at that? And then finally, probably one of the biggest risks that we, hazards that we face is just the expansion of climate change over time. And they did make some references to it, but I thought it was fairly limited, so I'm gonna send them a copy. We have experts locally, Dr. Ellen Steiman from the Grand Valley State University Water Resources Institute actually did a presentation up here on climate change and the White Lake area, some of the things that we need to be paying attention to. So I'm gonna recommend that they, that they maybe beat that up and make it a little bit more robust and rely on some of the, the resources. But anyway, I thought it was a commendable job. And, and I'll make these available to them and to anybody in the audience that, that wants them. I think it was a, a, a good effort, absolutely, very worthwhile.
Okay, anyone else?
I want to know who read it.
Hearing none? Do we need a roll call on this?
Yes. Cabala?
Yes.
Holmstrom?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Sikkendo?
Yes.
Hillebrand?
Yes.
Zimmer?
Yes.
Salter?
Yes. Thank you, I think this is a, a good, good start. I'm sure it's a living document that will be modified as they go along and learn. Grateful for all the, the effort that the people have put this together. Hope we never have to use any of it. Alright, next is, let's see, traffic safety technology, Resolution twenty-five one-two.
I'll move Resolution twenty-five twelve, traffic safety technology.
Move in second?
Second.
Second, okay. Can we have a clarification from the police department on this?
Sure. So it's, it's for Flock Safety Cameras. They're, they're a camera system that collects and stores plate information, vehicle information. And they are nationwide at this point. Their service, even though we are obviously not in, oh, sorry. Even though we are not truly a member, we have already gained access to it, and it's already helped us actually develop a suspect on one fraud case. Lady was defrauded from Comet, I'm sorry, Harbor Light Credit Union for about seven thousand dollars. With the aid of an outside agency from Indiana and this service, we were able to track the suspect vehicle. And you could see where it had hit in multiple locations here in Michigan, as well as Ohio. And then the plate actually returned out of Jersey, New Jersey. So, so basically, this, this system will allow us access to a nationwide network of cameras. It would also allow us to install six cameras here within the city of Whitehall on a kind of a try it before you buy it basis. So it's a sixty day trial, obviously still pending approval from you folks during the budget process to keep those cameras. But it definitely is a very handy tool for law enforcement. As we've seen people become more mobile, the criminal element cannot stay in one jurisdiction. And especially with these large fraud networks where they're traveling, this becomes a very useful tool for locating these suspects and actually getting identification and charges on those folks.
Are the cameras in the cars?
They are not, they would be pole mounted on the street. They, they take still, still images, not video. And they don't, they're not like collecting facial recognition, nothing like that. They're collecting plate data and supplying that plate data to the shareholders that are involved in that, the Flock camera contracts.
Brandon, you all know who the county has and so forth?
Oh, I know generally where, the closest one to us right now, I think, is Russell, out, out in the Kendall Lakewood Club area. The departments in Muskegon County currently have the camera systems, have Flock, include City of Muskegon, the county, the Northern Shores has them, I believe Roosevelt Park, Muskegon Township. So the great thing, we, you're able to kind of track vehicles as they leave a scene, can see the general direction where they're going, can give you information on, on their whereabouts to help track those folks down. So, but it is, in Muskegon County, I don't know the exact number. The last conversation I had with some of the detectives, it was, it was near sixty cameras just in our county. So, the north end is not covered well, there's only, like I said, there's only one north end camera which is currently located out in the Lakewood Club area. But there are cameras up in the Traverse City, so joining this network will allow us access and allow us to track down some of those folks that we would probably not be able to.
And coming from my background, we have had multiple people in that have been, as Brandon said, a retail fraud ring, where they will go from city to city to city and as a group, start ripping off Walmarts, Myers, all those, and then they just keep moving. And that's what they do, so.
I don't, I don't discount the value of the system. I guess I'm, I'm just wondering, we are coming up to our budget discussion. So I guess I would like to see this as part of the broader budget discussion. I'm not opposed to the system, I think it sounds, sounds like a great add. But I feel hesitant to approve this now, when we're getting ready to work on our budget. And this is kind of preempting the budget a little in my mind, so I'm not sure. And I guess I'd like others' thoughts on that.
I agree with you a hundred percent.
We're, we're having a discussion on Monday, so.
If the police department wants to make it part of their budget, starting next, you know, next month, we can talk about it then, but I don't, you know, I'm not for it for right now.
How does this system work? I mean, where do you, what do you? So, you, you, you get an idea of a license plate number?
So, yeah, so like, obviously, the Harbor Light case, we did our own social media post about the suspect. I'm sure folks here have seen it. And through that post and through interaction with other police departments, they were able to give us a license plate. We then go into the system and search that license plate and see where it is, where it is hidden cameras. So you can kind of see the route it's traveled, it's all timestamped, it's all, all saved. So it allows us to track that vehicle and, and to some degree its occupants to other locations and find out where they actually are from, hopefully help to ID that suspect or suspects. So it's a, it also can be set up to give you what basically they call hot alerts. So if there's a wanted person, say somebody wanted for a homicide in a surrounding city or township, it can actually alert us of that person traveling in Whitehall, so that it can then be submitted out to our staff.
And are you able to, for instance, just, for any reason, just plug in my license plate and find out where I've been?
Well, they, they want us to have a complete number associated with it. So an actual criminal investigation is just. Well, they, they, they want us to have a complaint number associated with it, so an actual criminal investigation is just not, just like.
And they want you to have that, but can you just access something, make up a reason or whatever?
I don't think so. You have to have an actual complaint number associated, so in that search primer, that's something you have to have. Just like there's, uh, just like running your plate i- in the lean system, like I have to have a bona fide criminal reason, investigative reason to do it. I can't just plug it in legally.
Do you move the cameras around? Cause I'm feeling like, once they, once they know where they are, they just go some, go around and.
Well, and, and.
Cause you have to see the, the license plate, the camera has to see the plate, so.
Correct.
Can I just take a different road?
Yeah, they're not, they're not mobile, they're not gonna, they're, they're mount, pole mounted, um, or mounted on existing poles. Um, they are something I think that, um, obviously we, whether you go into Meyer or Walmart providing food, there's cameras everywhere. Um, the advantageous thing with this is that it actually collects that plate data for us so that we can track it. Um, most of these folks, um, you know, they're, they're not trying, they're not smart enough to go around and dodge cameras.
Easy, easiest in and out routes.
Yeah, so, you know, they're gonna hop off, and that's where we, the placement of these cameras was designed, obviously, we looked at the, the in and out routes in the city. Uh, Colby Street, White Lake Drive, um, you know, those areas where we're gonna see traffic coming in and out. When we've had businesses beneath the pass, these folks aren't local, they're coming from other jurisdictions, um, and with this, it would help us track those folks down.
What, what other cities of three thousand people have this?
Oh, so, a lot of smaller places have it. So someone, now, Brandon, Shelby just approved one camera as a test camera, kind of like what this situation is. It's like a try it before you buy it. So the village of Shelby approved it, um, a couple, maybe a month ago at one of their council meetings. Um, they, they're putting up one camera. Um, it's kind of on their main drag through Shelby, uh, so, um.
If they've only got one camera, are they gonna have to pay eighteen thousand dollars a year?
It's per camera, so I don't, uh, three thousand a camera. So even, so this try it before you buy thing doesn't mean we're stuck with six cameras. We could try it and say, you know what, I need two. Um, or council's approved, you folks approved too, and we would, and we would do our best to put up two in the most, uh, strategic location.
So the sixty day, um, if you said, okay, well, let's put them up, you can put them up today, and we could, in theory, put this discussion of the funding off to the budget session and make a decision at the end of May at the council meeting for how the budget's approved, and you could still be in that trial period, and we would still be okay. I, I'm just hesitant to approve this as part of our budget when we haven't gotten to the budget yet.
Ag- agree, agree. And so it is definitely, it, it is definitely a thing that if you folks decided not to approve it, and at this point, they're not enough. So there's, there's a lot of right-of-way requirements that they have to go through with the, with the county, uh, county roads. I think there's only one camera placement that is on like private or city property that we don't have to get right-of-way approved from the county. And that's a, and that's a kind of a process, um, and that, they're still in that process. So they're not going to place any cameras until they're all done with that. This is just basically to, to be able to sign the agreement, say we're gonna try the sixty days out. If it's something we decide that we don't get enough to use out of because we're maybe a smaller jurisdiction. What it does is obviously, it's great to have those cameras, and it's great to have access to that, that wider network. I'm sure I could, I, we, we could manage things without it, but it is definitely a good tool, it's something that we see more and more technology being used in law enforcement to help solve our cases.
Why would you request six exactly?
So it, so basically, that was in conjunction with the folks from, uh, from Flock. We looked at our in and out of the city locations, so that we cover both directions on some of the intersections. And, and six just seemed like it was a, not shooting for the moon, but a reasonable number that we could cover, you know, both directions at, uh, Colby and Mears. Uh, Peterson and Colby, then I believe out at, uh, one by Harbor Lake Credit Union, um, and then I believe one, oh, one on the causeway between us and Montague.
So does this have to be monitored on a regular basis for any reason, or does it just sit there?
Just sits there, yep, doesn't have to be monitored, no.
So what is the cost for the sixty day trial period? What do we have to pay? We have to buy the cameras and then we try them out?
No, I don't believe, I, all that's gonna happen is if we don't want them in sixty days, they come and yank them out.
So if we don't pay anything, if we, if we, they don't meet the trial, or if we decide to go with two or three.
Correct. So there's no, there's no requirement that we keep all six? You know, if we decide that, that, for us financially, and it's the best choice for the police department, we look at it and say, okay, we only want the ones at Colby and Mears.
Well, we don't really, don't need to approve, uh, six license plate readers at an annual if we have eighteen thousand dollars at this point.
No, no, it is, it is to, to allow them to place them and do the try it or buy it for sixty day. Um, that cost is in there, so you know that that obviously is in sixty days, they're gonna, they're gonna want a decision.
So we could put that financial piece of it into the budget discussion and go from there, and they could still continue with their permitting or whatever they need to do.
So I guess my que- uh, we're talking about next year's budget, this, I'm, I'm assuming this is extra funds, this isn't what you guys currently have? Do you have nothing available to cover this within her budget year?
Correct, correct.
I just wanted to make sure there wasn't funds there available that you guys were planning on using.
This would be gen- general fund.
Yeah, next, next. I just wanted to make sure there was no, nothing in the current that would cover this.
What would tell us if they're worth it or not after the sixty days?
If it helped us sign, solve some complaints, solve some criminal complaints, I think it's already has, so we, day one, when we talked to these folks before we even signed up, they said, well, if you're interested, we'll get you a login, we'll get you signed up, and that's how it helped us develop a suspect on this fraud, this lady lost seven thousand dollars. Um, you know, to me, a year's probably, that's pretty big money. Um, so I can already see the benefit of having it. Because if we didn't, um, there are kind of back channels ways to access it through another agency. But if that agency's busy, they're not gonna log in formally and, and search the system. It's my complaint to work on, it's not our agency's complaint to, to try to solve.
Are there other similar, similar systems?
There is not. I mean, Flock is kind of the, the only one out there, yeah.
You can call me skeptical, but I'm afraid of them.
Sure.
I get nervous anytime somebody talks about their maintenance-free technology solution.
Yeah, so.
There's no such thing.
Yeah, Tom, I would say it's not, I mean, it's maintenance-free in the fact that they want you to pay three grand a year for each camera. So if it goes down, they're still getting, obviously, they're gonna, they're gonna come give you another camera because they're paying three grand a year.
So the cost of the cameras covered the first year.
Yeah, and that's how.
Three grand a piece, and then they just make off with, yeah, replace cameras.
It's pretty much like everything now these days with software, you have to pay up a certain maintenance, even if it's maintenance-free, you're paying that three grand a year for that camera. A subscription is technically how it.
Just like Exxon and everybody else out there.
Have you had any, have you had any discussions with Montague and maybe sharing the sort of, cause, I mean, if they're going out across the bridge, they're going over there.
Sure, sure.
So I just.
I am not directly, no. But that would, but they would, that would be, that would be a good point to discuss with them, sure.
So I guess I'm still, I think, I think going ahead with the, with the, um, trial is, is possible without doing a budget approval before budget approval, so I would like to.
I agree, I just don't, I don't like the way this is written.
I, yeah, I can't amend the motion, cause I didn't make it.
I don't have any problem with the system, and I don't have any problem with the sixty day trial. But I have a problem with the way this is written, cause if we approve it, it says we're spending eighteen thousand dollars.
Right, a year.
Yes, and, yep, and it, it, obviously it is, like many technologies, it's not a cheap system.
And I'm, I'm bothered by the fact that it was requested six cameras to begin with instead of one or maybe two. So what, what we need instead of this re- resolution is just a, a voice vote on whether we should go ahead with this trial period, which actually costs us no dollars, and then, and then have it come back to council after that. If, and, and hear the reasons for doing it again, how many we want and all that stuff, correct?
At the will, do they even need approval to do that?
Uh, no, there's, there's no cost.
If, if there's no cost in there, they're only.
You're not paying the twenty thousand nine hundred either, right?
Yeah.
Software, the cost to install the readers, that's, I assume that's not getting paid either.
I don't believe so, and that's a conversation I can double check with, uh, the folks at Flock, but when they came to us and gave their presentation, um, they explained this is obviously a sixty day, you guys try it, if you don't like it, you come and hold cameras. But obviously they did, I mean, they, they are like, we will come and give a presentation after sixty days to council and explain to them why, uh, why it's important to keep. And that's just like any business, they're gonna try to sell their product.
It'd certainly be interesting to see the data that comes out of it after those, at that, you know, at the end of the sixty days, but.
I, I have one more question. I, I, I agree that I don't think, you know, we even need a motion, but it would be helpful to know if there's some, some national data on, on the use of it. I, I watched a crime show where, real crime unfortunately, where it, it seemed like the, the guy that they're prosecuting, they found him with this technology, his car had been circling the, the home, and then they even found the fa- the car. Well, they found the car that had driven around that, like scouting out and, you know, and then they found the car at a different location as, as well, that's how they found the suspect, and they're using it in, in a, a real court case right now. I think that's the same technology.
Can it be hacked? I, I assume just about any kind of technology can be hacked by certain people that know what they're doing.
I suppose it's all feasible, but I, I unaware of ever being accessed like that, but.
Make a motion.
Yeah, we have a motion and a second on the table. Do we want it to draw the motion? Do you, we're drawing the motion?
They'll draw in the motion if they don't, yeah, if they can do it, just do it.
I'll draw my second.
Okay, so we have an understanding that the council basically is approving the pre-trial. And it'll be on, well, it'll be after the budget, that maybe the results from that pre-trial will come in.
Yeah, there's, yeah, I think the last thing emailing happened, it's still thirty or sixty days outward, I mean, getting approvals from right away in installations.
So it could, it could conceivably come later in year as a budget amendment. Okay. Alright, everybody's on board with that. Last up is public comment. I want to make a public comment.
Hi, Christina Normandin, um, if it would have been labeled a lot clearer on the agenda, I would have known that you guys were talking about that because, um, I live over on Funnel Field and I'm the one that called because I've been complaining for five years, the city manager who hasn't done anything. There's a group chat goes on, people are sick and tired of them parking there, and there's supposed to be no parking for five years. And I'm the one that's voicing it because there's people in this town that really do fear retaliation. I mean, it's happened to me, so it's real. I have also every year asked numerous times for trash cans to be on River Street because the abundance of trash that comes from practices and games, and we don't get it, or we get one, and there's a bunch of trash on the other end, it blows into our yard, it's unacceptable. Um, so I've also been told by the person that does the police, or the, um, the enforcement, cause I finally got to him and he finally got stuff going, um, that there's supposed to be more of a police presence. We haven't seen an increase in police presence because the abundance of people that are bringing their dogs and not having their dogs on leashes is a serious problem. Um, just a couple days ago, there was a dog that was off a leash, saw one of the neighbor's dogs, and ran aggressively into the neighbor's yard, um, trying to get their dog. And the owner didn't do anything, stood in the middle of the field and was like, here puppy, puppy. And the owner was terrified the dog was gonna jump the fence. Um, there is a serious problem. Um, I understand you guys don't live over there, or else you guys would probably be in the group chat, but we do. So what is gonna happen when my daughter gets bit, or one of my animals gets bit by a dog that's on city property, comes running and mauls my, me, my daughter, or one of my animals from your guys' property when it's not being enforced? There's numerous other problems. I'm glad they're finally starting to get looked at, but there really should be no parking over there, cause it's, was no parking, but if we can start trying to get rid of the trash, stuff like that, I would appreciate. I love that they do practices, I love that the kids are doing that, but there needs to be something for the people that live there.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else?
Hi, my name's Ian Martin. Um, so just listening tonight, I, I just would, with regards to the technology, storing, uh, license plate information is something that I think residents would probably want to weigh in on. Um, if, if your license plate is going to be stored, I think it's something that people should definitely know about. Um, and I think, uh, especially if it's being held by a third party that is not a government organization, or even if it were a government organization. Um, I think storing that information is something that really needs to be considered, and, uh, the community needs to be allowed to know that that's happening and needs to give feedback on it. So, uh, thank you very much. I don't doubt that it's being used for good intentions and for things that need, you know, that are, that are wrong. But I do think that that information needs to be very carefully used.
Anyone else? Hearing none. Thank you all for coming. We're adjourned.